Good evening. I will be playing double role this evening. Mr. Lyons unfortunately couldn't make the meeting. He is away on business, so I will be the acting chair this evening. First item on our agenda is our spotlight. Tonight, we will be honoring Eric Vander Els, the Board of Ed coming. Mr. Kassimus, you wanted to comment to me?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman. As you know, this past weekend, we had an incident that was in the papers. It's been in the papers at a basketball game. Mr. Matafiri is here, and I would like if he can have a few minutes to let us know what took place exactly and what the security measures that are being put in place for the next time.
All right, I really didn't expect this, but I'll definitely talk about it. Eric's outstanding, and he's done a great job the last four years at McMahon. I just want to mention that, and we're very proud of him, just like the town is, just supportive of him and everybody. And we're going to miss you, but we're going to be reading about you at UConn, that's for sure. We played Stanford High in basketball on Friday. They are part of the FCAC, who play regular season. We did play them in the Holiday Tournament. There's been some history when we meet Stanford down in Stanford, sometimes at McMahon, over the last, I've been Athletic Director for 20 years, over the last 20 years. The security there, there were seven police officers. They had seven security guards. We had our security guard. We also had crowd control myself. Mrs. Corishess was there. We were very strong with people, with adults in the stands. It happened outside. The two kids left right at the end of the game, walked towards their cars. They were asked, "Are you from Norwalk?" "Yes," and then they were attacked. During this time, we were still in the gym. We didn't know anything about it. Suzanne was there with me till the bus left, and no one reported to the cops or anything. And then Saturday morning, we got hit with it. The two kids were attacked and then went to the hospital. Now, going forward, we've dealt with situations similar to this, so we set up more security at the school for games like this coming week, like tomorrow, which for Central's going into Norwalk High for a game. We plan to beef up the security. Same with Friday. Central's coming into McMahon on Friday. We're going to beef up the security. So we've done that going forward. We've done it in the past, and we'll continue doing it. But it's a misfortune, and it's a shame it happened, but it did happen, and you can't ignore it. Our other Athletic Director was on the phone with me this morning, also over the weekend. Joe, we're sorry it happened. It happened outside. Maybe the security should have been outside a little more also. He honed up to that, too. But we do feel sorry about the incident that occurred, really do. But going forward, Doug and I communicate on a daily basis, and we feel we're in pretty good shape with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matafiri. Thank you.
I know the board had a concern, so it was good that he was here.
Thank you for bringing that to our table.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comments. Mr. Barbas?
Good evening. Secretary, I will be calling speakers who signed up for public comments. When you get up here, please introduce yourself and your address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. After two and a half minutes, I'll put my hand up, and at three minutes, I'll ask you to conclude. Our first speaker is Doug Geiger?
Geiger.
Geiger, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Doug Geiger, Nine Mott Avenue. I've been teaching in special education in the great city of Norwalk for 37 years. I'm a member of the Early Childhood Team along with my colleagues, Dr. Crowell and Mrs. Alenskis. I was shocked and dismayed when I was recently informed that the Early Childhood Team would be disbanded this spring at a time that coincided with my two colleagues' maternity leaves, because that was a convenient time to do it, I kid you not. I was told our work would be assumed by elementary school staff. Lacking evidence to the contrary, the Early Childhood Team has operated professionally and efficiently for years. It has been one of the bright spots in a department whose reputation has been otherwise sullied. This Early Childhood Team represents the epitome of the term "team," has always advocated for special needs children, their parents, and district programs that educate them. We take pride in cultivating relationships with our parents, our birth-to-three providers, community providers, and in-district staff. We offer flexibility to meet the needs of our students, parents, and service providers. From the initial referral paperwork through the eligibility PPTs, the Early Childhood Team is the single contact for parents. We hold the necessary certifications to evaluate and write coherent legal IEPs with this group of students. We provide SRBI and itinerant speech services, and along with our preschools, provide the highly-desired continuum of services. We worked during the summer. Last summer, we held five full days of PPTs, 35 PPTs, and completed evaluations, observations during five additional days. We had 277 referrals from the birth-to-three system alone, held over 300 PPTs, completed nearly 300 evaluations, and scores of screenings and observations. The move to decentralize the responsibilities of the Early Childhood Team is based on specious arguments. The amount of time, flexibility, knowledge of process, availability to go into the community, and work during the summer need to be considered. Dr. Adamowski has said on at least two occasions that the true litmus test for any district is how the most vulnerable students are treated. I ask you, who is more vulnerable than a young, innocent, two-and-a-half to five-year-old child with a disability? He has also quoted in the hour, saying that our inclusionary special ed preschool classes were under-enrolled. Nothing is further from the truth. Our allotted special education slots are filled. Today, I was told that we will now be placing qualifying special education students in our peer model slots, which will, in fact, change our classes from inclusionary classes to self-contained classes. This action is considered a change of placement for our previously-placed special education students, and this was all done without holding a PPT, which is illegal. Please remember what happened in Darien. Perhaps the most disturbing announcement from Dr. Adamowski is that an early childhood general education instructional specialist will be the administrator to run and oversee our new special education preschool center. This person has told me to my face they have no knowledge of special education.
Mr. Geiger, three minutes?
After observing this person...
Three minutes.
Sorry. Okay. It's going to be a nightmare if these things go through. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paula Caruso.
Good evening. My name is Paula Caruso. I'm a Norwalk resident with two children in the Norwalk Public Schools. I'm also a special education preschool teacher in the school system. I've been teaching in Norwalk for 22 years. The last nine years have been as a special education preschool teacher. I'd like to talk about the decision to reduce the inclusionary special ed preschools from six to eight because they are under-enrolled. In my current preschool, I have a total of 16 students with special needs. Eight of those students are enrolled in my morning program, and I have eight special needs students in my afternoon program as well. These numbers only reflect my special needs population. They do not include typical peer role models enrolled in my program. I began this school year with fewer students than this, as I do every year. These numbers have grown this year and will continue to grow this year, as they have in previous school years, due to the concept of open enrollment. Our inclusionary preschool classes are unlike any other classes in the district. We have and we need to have open enrollment in our preschool classes for any child three to five years old who becomes eligible for special education. This is prescribed by state and federal laws. Our staff ratios of two adults to 18 students are higher than the LE preschools, who have a one-to-six ratio, as do our school readiness classes. The Early Childhood Team and special education preschool classes offer a full continuum of services, such as SRBI, itinerant speech, right up to enrollment in one of our special ed preschool classes, including related services. These related services may include the support of a one-to-one ABA therapist for our qualifying students on the autism spectrum. These intense services cost more initially, but provide the students with the necessary and required supports early on, so costs can and are reduced later. One need only look back six to seven years in this district, when we did not provide these services in our preschool programs, to see the negative impact it had on our relationship with parents, the cost overruns for out-of-district placements, and the legal fees involved. For those who are not familiar with this or who ignore it, history is doomed to repeat itself. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brenda Penn Williams.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Penn Williams. I reside at 21 Karen Drive, Norwalk, Connecticut. I come to you this evening to make you aware of the current substitute teachers pay scale. $90 a day, which equates to $12.85 per hour. The substitute teachers in Norwalk are underpaid for what they are required to do. They have to be able to manage the classroom under a tremendous amount of pressure. For some, they feel a sense of intimidation when entering the classroom. They are required to maintain the classroom as if they are the permanent teacher. Some teachers may leave three pages for their lesson plan. Students are not always on their best behavior. You must become more competitive with the surrounding town pay scale for substitutes. Westport Public Schools, $100. Wilton Public Schools, $120. New Canaan Public Schools, $100. Please make the substitute teachers' pay scale competitive. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jan Ventoux.
Good evening. My name is Jan Ventoux, Nine Mott Avenue. I have been a special education teacher in the Norwalk Public School System for over 40 years, with the last 20 years being in the preschool program at Cranberry School. Currently, I service 16 children with special needs in my program. Eight special needs children attend my morning program, and eight special needs children attend my afternoon program. These numbers continue to grow throughout the school year, as the special needs children are identified by the Early Childhood Team. In our school district, we currently have eight preschool programs that service a variety of special needs children, as well as typically-developing peers. We were told by the previous administration, this administration, and the Board of Ed, that among other things that the Early Childhood Center would provide us was more space in our overcrowded schools. The argument that costs will be reduced is moot, as all eight classes will not, in fact, fit in the new building or provide for any future growth. We have been told that LE classrooms will be moving into our current preschool classrooms once the special ed students vacate. So much for our overcrowded schools. The original building for the Early Childhood Center was to house all eight of our classes. We were promised, and it was advertised in the hour, as a state-of-the-art building from design, furniture, technology, materials. That project, with no disrespect to Mr. Lowe or Mr. Ireland, is now being reduced to a code upgrade, some painting, and an overall spit shine that will accommodate only six of the eight classes. The plan now is to consolidate our existing eight preschool classes to six. It was presented that we were under-enrolled, but if you look at our current special needs enrollment, clearly, we are not. Is this decision being made in the best interest of our most vulnerable Norwalk Public School students? Or is it to make a square peg fit into a round hole? Where are our priorities? Please make the correct decision for our most vulnerable children. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Moes, it looks like. John Moesby, I guess it is.
Good evening, boys. My name is John Moes, 15 Addison Avenue. I'm going to be very brief here tonight. I am a little disappointed at the fact that I have requested many times for the Board of Education to have some of the, I'm looking on the receipt, you got on your report, Bertha Craig Audit Report. I've been asking for that Audit Report from Craig, and we never get copies of it. You got on here Bertha Allen Grant. That should be made public, where the public can see it. There's a lot of things on here that the public is not aware of, and you are clearly in violation of the law. Even contracts, I looked at that on the pretty much, say, contract, public contracts is open to the public. And for too long, you all voted to be good. Now, you got some Bertha Act here tonight. We should have copies to see what's Bertha Act. Every time y'all come here, the public just get a plain piece of paper. This is wrong, boys. And also, I want to say one more thing. The state did send me Title I, did very nice, and I looked at Title I. It's a lot of violations in here, Title I, what you all are doing. We have to read it, not what the public is giving. The public have to read. And one thing I saw in this report under this news, it said that parents in the community must be involved with all finance and everything. It was a beautiful thing, and the state and them sent it to me. And they told me if I need some more things, they would send it to them. For too long, been too much game being won, too much politics being won over, too much of this year, just looking out for yourself. So I'm asking you both members, y'all got to start to stop this going to the executive system and make things available to the public, so we all can see what's going on. Thank you very much.
I would mention, I just looked up, the CREG report is posted on our website, under special education. Our next speaker is Kristi Valera. No, you don't want to speak? Okay, and our next speaker will be Lori Keegan.
Lori Keegan, to Barjun Road. I wanted to let you know that we are having a forum on Thursday, February 4th, from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM, adults only, at West Rocks Middle School, and it's going to be called, it is called Parenting in a Digital World. Our guest speakers are State's Attorney Richard Colangelo and Detective Nathaniel Paulson of the Norwalk Police Department. They are members of the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. They will share with the audience real stories and real crimes that have been committed here in Fairfield County. Our speakers will encourage your questions and participation during their presentation. I'd like to thank Dr. Lynn Moore and the PTOC Council for hosting this event. Thank you, and I hope you all attend.
That concludes our public comments for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Barbas. Next item on our agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Can I hand that over to Dr. Adamowski?
Thank you, Ms. Keys. First item tonight is one that I indicated to you following the presentation of the CREG audit, that I would respond with those things that I think we could accomplish relative to the priority recommendations in the audit during this school year. So basically, the period now between January and July of 2016. So I'm going to review this with you for the benefit of the public, and, you know, hope it represents our first significant and tangible progress on addressing the CREG recommendations. Now, in context, this is what I believe we can accomplish during the course of the rest of this school year. Obviously, this is going to be a three-year process, which runs parallel to the Strategic Operating Plan of the district during that period of time. So the item number one is to conclude a search for a Chief of Pupil Services, which will report to the Superintendent. And as you know, this represents the upgrade of that position. It represents a greater accountability of the Superintendent for special education, having the Chief of Pupil Services as a direct report, and the ability to support that person in the many difficult decisions ahead that have to be made in order to right this ship. CERC is in the final stages of the search process. At some point, I hope in early February, I'll be able to report to you on where we are, and hopefully, the candidates that we are most interested in. I will tell you, though, at this point, that this has been a difficult search. There is both a state and national shortage of folks that are qualified to be Director of Pupil Services, and there are open vacancies all over the state in this particular role. Nonetheless, I think, you know, we remain confident of our ability to attract a top person who has knowledge of special education at an expert level, but also is a strong leader and able to accomplish difficult goals over the period ahead. The second issue was commented on earlier today. This is the planning and implementation of the centralization of the inclusive preschool classes at the Roosevelt Center, effective September 2016. I think we have to look upon this, you know, every glass can be viewed as half-full or half-empty. We have to look upon this as a half-full situation. My understanding is that there is no change in the plan, which is, by the way, the responsibility of the city, as you know, but no change in the plan that was developed a year ago and is finally being brought to fruition and out to bid. It has always called for six classrooms. It is a state-of-the-art facility. There are observation rooms, there are rooms for related services, and it does require an administrator on site. And we will be taking our Early Childhood Director, Pamela Jefferson, and stationing her there for the administration of that facility. And that is because we only run three other preschool classes, right? And this is the majority of our preschool classes, and so, of course, our director should be stationed there and providing that service, and we should not hire another administrator in order to do that. If it is, these classes are supposed to operate on a ratio of 18 to 1, nine of the children in each session being special education students, and nine of the students being regular education students. And that is the state guideline for these classes as well, in other parts of the state. In addition to that, these students have, in many cases, a large number of related services, aides, ABAs, and so on. And we will have more space for all the adults, as well as the children, at the Roosevelt Center. In the event that we over-enroll, we will have to have other classes in other schools. Now, as you know, this is a challenge, because one of the benefits of consolidating the preschools is it gives us a little bit, just a little bit of breathing room, in our existing schools so that we do not over-enroll. So this will have to be managed carefully. But clearly, it will provide a step forward in a more efficient way, as well, of offering this service to both special education and inclusive and typical preschool students. It was alluded to tonight, that we are having difficulty getting typical students to enroll, families of typical students to enroll, and that is true. And it is likely that next year, we will have to drop the tuition requirement for the tipicals, simply to get enough students to provide that typical environment for our special ed students. In many cases, this kind of class does not work for a working parent, because it's a morning session or an afternoon session, and most working parents will want a full-day preschool. But again, there are a number of things that have to be done, planned, implemented, changed, in order to make this work in a way that will benefit the most students, and that is an achievable goal for us in the next few months. Third task or goal would be, in partnership with current providers, to return students to Norwalk in three outplaced classes for 2016-17. And these would be specifically two secondary ED classes to Norwalk High School, and one elementary autism classroom to Wolf Pit School. Now, currently, the only available classroom in the entire district at the elementary level is this classroom at Wolf Pit School, okay? We're virtually 100% capacity. But this is a suite, it's a smaller room and a larger room, that would lend itself very nicely to this program. We are going to, in order to phase into this, we're going to return these classes and have them run by the current providers, the current outside placement providers. And then they will transition, over the course of a year or two, to our staff, as we can train staff, hire staff, and be able to take over this fully. So initially, we'll have a savings in transportation, and some tuition savings, and then a fully, a more realized tuition savings. More than that, we think we can provide a higher quality of program, and one that exists in the community in which the children live. Item four is to request a desk audit of IEPs from the Connecticut State Department of Education. Now, I spoke to the board about this early on, as we were awaiting the CREG audit. I have held off on this, and I will hold off on it until we have a Chief of Special Services in place, because once this desk audit becomes known, there will be a mountain of work that has to be addressed and directed in order to improve the IEPs. You had a glimpse of this through the CREG audit. They audited a handful of IEPs, a selective sample of IEPs, and you'll recall that they found that approximately half of them were not in compliance, okay? So we would expect that finding on a broader scale from the State Department. And they also found, based upon their Rubric Rating Scale of Quality IEPs, that the vast majority of our IEPs, some 90%, were written at the lowest level of quality. So this is going to require a tremendous amount of work to bring this up to standard, and I hope that at the point we are faced with it, we will be fully staffed in our Special Education Department. Fifth is to improve a system of financial controls. This will involve all district-level expenditures and contracts being approved by the Chief of Special Services. The Budget Director will meet biweekly with the Chief of Pupil Services to assess and project budgets. Dr. Michael Chiketti is going to perform these roles until a new chief joins the district, and so that this process can be initiated immediately. In fact, it is, we are in process of initiating this currently. Number six, and now we are looking ahead to what we can plan and implement this year to take fruition in the next school year, and that would be to plan and implement an elementary school demonstration and training site, which offers a full continuum of services in 2016-17. Now, as you know, the basic finding of the CREG audit is that we have a service-delivery model that is heavily dependent on individual services, and mostly paraprofessional services, aides and ABAs. What we need to do is to create a full spectrum of professional services. We need more teachers, fewer paraprofessionals. We need more teachers, and we need more steps in the spectrum. Ideally, over the next three years, we will have, at least in each feeder pattern, a full continuum of services existing, so that a student could be placed at various levels of the SRBI process, based upon their needs. And we will have a service-delivery model for each category of special education student. This will be a more expensive undertaking. It will require the addition of a number of teaching positions, but we have to get to the point where we can do it somewhere that is observable and can serve as a demonstration and can serve as a training site for others in our district as we seek to expand it. Number seven involves combining and integrating each high school with feeder middle schools for development of a consistent continuum of service. The issue at the secondary level is not so much the absence of a continuum of services. We actually have a greater continuum of services at the secondary level than we do the elementary level. It's the consistency. The same services do not exist middle to high school, and vice versa, for students to make a smooth transition. But again, that is a doable goal, at least in... for development of a consistent continuum of service. The issue at the secondary level is not so much the absence of a continuum of services. We actually have a greater continuum of services at the secondary level than we do the elementary level. It's the consistency. The same services do not exist middle to high school and vice versa for students to make a smooth transition. But again, that is a doable goal, at least in planning in the next several months. Number eight involves reconstitution of our special education department, people, positions, roles, and responsibilities to create the capacity to accomplish all priority recommendations of the CREG Special Education Review during the term of our Strategic Operating Plan 2016 to 2019. I'll be addressing some of these issues with you in executive session this evening, but this will be a, this is going to require a level of expertise and leadership that we perhaps have not had before in order to accomplish these goals. Number nine is to establish the extra-duty position of compliance and quality case manager in all elementary and middle schools beginning in 2016-17. You will recall that in this last contract negotiation with the NFT, there was agreement of the parties to do this, to accomplish this. We are the only school district our size that I know of that does not have a person at each school that is responsible for case management of student IEPs. This is why we address situations like we did at the beginning of this year at Nathan Hale where there's a class of ten and then there's a class of forty, and no one could anticipate the class of forty. And here you have the poor teacher who has this over-enrolled class. Case management means that there is a lead teacher in each school that looks at each student's IEPs and ensures that there is staff available to meet the IEP. This is integral, critical to our ability to actually meet IEPs and not have 50% of them out of compliance. We also need the chief of special services to have a person in each school that they can communicate with in terms of bringing about changes, upgrades, and improvement in our services. This is very similar to the relationship that we've created for Dr. Connor with the CSIDs in the elementary schools. So they meet with him monthly, they are trained by him, they are implementing things in the curriculum. This is the same kind of relationship that these case managers would have with the chief of special services. So in most districts, this is an extra-duty position. It involves some release time and some additional compensation. Sometimes it involves additional days, compensated days of work, and we would negotiate this compensation with the NFT. Both I and President Jordan have appointed a negotiating committee to do this. We think it can be done in a couple of sessions, and essentially, you know, we have a commitment of the parties to do this in a reasonable way. We have examples from many districts in terms of how this is done and how it is compensated in other districts in the state. Number 10 is to improve our capacity to develop, implement, and communicate 504 plans and the use of adaptive technology beginning in the next school year. Now, it was pointed out to us through the CREG audit that we have been considering 504 as a special ed issue. In reality, it is not. It is a civil rights issue. It is an issue of access based upon adaptations in the environment that allow a student to access a full education. And adaptive technology is also a big part of this. So the notion here is to assign this work and this position, which it requires, to our technology department. And this individual would be involved not only in working with families to develop 504 plans, but most importantly, communicating them as a child goes to the next grade or goes from elementary school to middle school or middle school to high school. That's been a major weakness in our system with large numbers of parents reporting that they go to the open house and the new teacher knows nothing about the 504 plan. And so this is going to require monitoring and also the coordination of a large amount of adaptive technology that we are currently using and anticipate using more of in the future. Number 11 deals with creating the capacity to audit and manage our outside placements. And as you know, this has been the greatest area of growth in our school system, and we are, in fact, this year, some $4 million over budget for outside placements. This role is to manage those, coordinate shared services with other districts. Quite often, you can go in with other districts to transport students to the same place, facilitate the return to district when appropriate of students. And this includes the large number of DCF and court placements that we also have. Right now, with no one visiting our outside placements, we do not know when we pay $100,000, $200,000 for an outside placement, we don't even know if the student is receiving the services that we're paying for because no one is there checking on it. So that's part of the audit function, is to visit these schools, make sure students are getting what the district is paying for, coordinating shared services to the extent possible, and establishing a relationship with the parent such that when the district is able to offer something in the district that would better meet the student's need, you have a relationship with the parent who has to sit down and agree to this at a PPT meeting. And right now, many of our families who are in outside placements are simply out of sight and out of mind, and the longer they have no relationship with the district, the more estranged they are from us and the more difficult that process will become. Now, I would call your attention to number 12, which is the final aspect of this plan. This is something that Mr. Meek is chairman of the finance committee and Mr. Lyons is chairman of the board. We've had discussions with our mayor, city council president regarding this. I am going to request of the City of Norwalk, from their fund balance, the establishment of a transitional special education development fund of $1.2 million a year for three years for the period 2016-17 through 2018-19. This fund would be used exclusively for the purpose of implementing the priority recommendations of the CREG audit to transition from over-reliance on one-on-one, paraprofessional, and contracted services to a professional service-delivery model for each classification of student need and a full continuum of scientifically-based, scientifically research-based interventions. Fund would be used to develop new roles, programs, and systems, and provide training and development to special ed staff at all levels to improve the scope and quality of specialized instruction. Items six through 11 on this list are largely dependent on the establishment of the fund in 2016-17. We have grappled with the issue of how to make the transition from where we are to where we should be with a full continuum of services. And the dilemma is, we have to establish that continuum of services before you can phase out the one-on-one services and the contracted services. So you have to have something to offer first, which is why we need a development fund, which is also why it can be transitional, because as we establish these things, students will come out of their current plans and into a plan that is better. But it will take a period of several years in order to be able to do this and really, really right the ship. So, you know, the mayor has expressed his commitment to trying to find a way to do this. The city has, as you are probably aware, a very large, very healthy fund balance currently. It's projected to grow by several million in the next year as well, and this would be a better alternative than simply trying to fund these improvements out of the operating budget, which is already perhaps as high as it can go at the 3.9 level to begin with. But it is just not possible to do these things and build the new structure without making at least a transitional investment that over time, where over time, we can transition our current expenditures to those things. So that is our best thinking on how to approach this. Again, a number of these recommendations can be done and will be done in the, accomplished in the immediate future. Others rely on a great deal of planning for the next school year, and still others rely on an infusion of transitional resources so that we can begin this transition over the course of the next year to be in a better place. I will stop at that point and just ask the board if they have any questions about any of the items I've mentioned.
Ms. Moskowitz?
Number 12, where you and the mayor and the board chair and I guess you two and Mr. Meek met and you had a conversation on, I guess, tapping into this development fund for the next few years. I'm curious as to find out, is this being relayed out to the public, the taxpayers, all those people out there who like to know what's going on with their money that were thinking about, you know, tapping into this fund? Is there some type of message that is going out there to the community so that they know what's going on? Because we just sat there and we were putting in for, I know, a 3.9, you know, budget, and then I know we're looking at trying to resolve some of these CREG problems, but I think that the more we are transparent to the public and let them know what's going on, I think it would be more acceptable to them if they know, instead of just, you know, a few people deciding on this. Because as you know, our board is funded by the taxpayers, and we need to sit there and start to have some consideration for them as well, as well as parents, you know, everyone. I think, I believe, and I strongly believe still to this very day, that everybody should be at the table, and we can listen and hear what they have to say, and then we can make a better case as to why we need this for our children, and then it'll be more acceptable out there and the public, instead of us walking out this room and, you know, dealing with the public who feels that they've been left out. So I'm just curious, is there something like, you know, meetings or talk conversations or something that's going to be going on to let, you know, the public, community, taxpayers know that we're looking at additional funding as well and that these are the benefits of this?
So this is the first public discussion of this, and obviously, we would not have those discussions without this going to the Board of Education first. I would also emphasize that this is a request because we cannot find another way to do this without making some initial investments upfront and providing an alternative, a better alternative, from which we can transition our current services. We can't transition our current services to nothing and then wait until there are enough students available that we can offer something. That's the dilemma of this. So this is a request. Now, I don't know, you know, the city in its wisdom and through the work of its finance director, they may have a better alternative. What I'm telling you tonight is that we need some transitional funding mechanism in order to do this. We are also aware that an advantage to the city of using fund balance would be that it does not contribute to the minimum budget requirement for us for the future, this is from the city's perspective, and that it does not impact the tax rate in a way that an increase in our operating budget does. But again, there may be other ideas on this, there may be better ways to do it. I'm simply pointing out that, and it's my recommendation, that a development fund that sends sunsets in three years, that provides us with the ability to create a structure that we can transition to and repurpose from our current expenditures is what's necessary. Now, you'll remember in the CREG audit, they did not feel we were spending more money than other districts in special education. They felt we were spending it on the wrong things. We had an over-reliance on one-on-one services, we had an over-reliance on contracted services and outside placements, and we did not have a full continuum of professional services, and we did not have a service-delivery model for each category of special ed. So, you know, our challenge is to try to create that, and I think we need help in getting over that hill. This did not occur in the last several years, this took a long time to occur, right? And it falls to us to fix it, to do something about it and to make it better. And I would hope that we would have the support and cooperation of our city government and all segments of the community in attempting to do that.
And that's where I was going.
But I think once there is a plan or at least a proposal that's acceptable to the city, then that could be communicated, you know, to the community.
Public needs to know what's going on, and to buy into something, then you need to put it out there and let them know.
Any other questions, Mr. Meek?
Just comments, essentially. The idea of tapping into a fund balance, it's been socialized within the last few weeks over the holidays, and as Dr. Adamoski said, you're hearing about it tonight, the question really boils down to an insourcing versus outsourcing question. We looked at the costs in this area over the last four years, they grew at some, like 60% in four years. So what do we do? Status quo is potentially, four years from now, we're 60% above where we are today. And if you think we can't afford it now, we definitely won't be able to afford it in the future if we don't start making structural changes to bring the things back in-house that make sense. So this is an effort to do that. Is it going to happen? It's a fluid situation, it's in development, but this is our best idea going forward to curb these costs. And this is not an epidemic, even though we're spending the same amount of money, this is not just in Norwalk, this is everywhere. Special ed costs are skyrocketing everywhere. So we need to do smarter things in-house, cut those costs down, or else, four years from now, it's really going to start cutting into the entire district. As much as it is right now, it'll be exacerbated if we don't start trying to take in some of these things.
And I do understand that, because I know our costs are off there, and I've been the number-one advocate for years, but saying that we are off, you know, but I'm just trying to focus on, yes, the communication part of it. We need to sit here and work on how to tighten that and make that better for getting this out to the public, that's all. I'm not saying that, you know, this is not the way to go. What I'm saying is that we need to be able to communicate this better to the public so they know what is actually going on happening, because on top of this, then we need to find out what kind of accountability, accountability structure or something that we're putting in place that's going to monitor this to make sure that this is happening, because we seem to keep coming to the table for the same thing, and it keeps, we keep going, going more deeper and deeper into the hole, as you said, over the last few years, and your projection is saying, it seems that it's going to still keep going. But we need to make sure that we're communicating this to the people and that we have some type of accountability or something put in place that we can sit there and monitor to make sure that this is going to definitely help our children.
On the accountability issue, as you know, Mr. Lyons has appointed an ad hoc board committee under the leadership of Dr. Krieverkour for the express purpose of monitoring our implementation of the CREG audit recommendations. So I think we will be strong on that point. On the communication point, I think we will need to be on the same page as the city in terms of how to accomplish this, and then, you know, go out and be able to communicate that.
Ms. Harris?
I'm just curious, do we know what year one, year two, and year three looks like in the development plan? And as the plan progresses, what happens to the parents, to the paraprofessionals?
Well, for example, if, you know, you have a teacher, right, or more teachers... and you can establish a full continuum of services as opposed to the partial one that, that we have, there will be less of a demand for one-on-one services. And keep in mind, you know, our, our special ed aides, while, you know, we have, we have many dedicated people who work very hard, they are untrained, they have never received training and they are not in the position that a trained certified teacher is in terms of meeting a student's needs. So yes, there would be a gradual transition, we won't give that up entirely, there will, there will be students who will need one-on-one assistance during the course of the, of the school day, just to be able to navigate the, the school in some cases. But certainly there'll be less of a reliance on one-on-one services, there'll be less of a, of a reliance on outside placements. When we have an outside placement, in many cases, it represents a failure of the school system to meet a need somewhere on the spectrum. And, you know, many of the schools that we are paying very high tuitions to, they are not doing anything magical that we could not do. And, and again, in an environment that is more supportive and closer to home.
Okay, so basically, we will let go of parents as the, as the, as the plan progresses?
You could say that as teachers are added and other professional services, there will be less of a need for paraprofessionals in one-on-one models.
And do we know what year one looks like or are you still working on?
Well, year one would be item six through 11 on this list. At least that's what I think we can accomplish.
Shaw, are you done?
Yes, thank you.
So, question number one, based on the timeline from January to July 2016, I'm not, I'm sorry, not question number one, recommendation number one, concluding the search for the chief of special services, that can feasibly conclude in July, correct?
No, I'm, I'm hoping it's concluded much earlier than that.
Okay.
The, the original timeline called for CERC to give us candidates by the end of this month.
Okay.
Now again, I, I, you know, this is, this is a difficult search. So I, you know, I, I'm hoping that within a limited number of very highly qualified candidates, that represents a, a national search, that, you know, we will have the person that we need without going further. If we need to go further, we, we will, but I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, if a decision can be made in February, that, you know, given 60 days notice, we could have somebody on, on board in April or May.
And, and just, I have a follow-up question. The numbers six through 11, they will be fluid, so whenever the, the chief is hired, these recommendations will be implemented on a continuum?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
With the exception of nine, which we're, you know, committed to in terms of contract negotiations.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Kessimus?
Sure. Question number eight, you're looking to reconstitute positions, roles, responsibilities. Today you're recommending for appointment two administrators in special ed. Do you feel that's a little premature or putting the cart before the horse?
No, we, we need to establish, first of all, we need to continue work that's underway, okay? So we can't just leave positions open, right? And secondly, I think we want to get to a point where we have a highly qualified staff in place at the time that the chief enters the picture with possibly one position, which would be the secession position left open to be selected by the, the new head.
So their roles will remain the same?
The roles, the, the role of a special ed administrator is generic in the sense that you are supervising the special education process in a number of schools. The way we organize that will be different and I'll be bringing you at some point in the future an org plan that would illustrate this. For example, relative to number seven, we feel that supervision of the secondary schools should be combined in each feeder pattern, middle schools and high school. Those are two of the five positions, right? You could then make the argument that another two of the five positions should deal with the feeder elementary schools to each high school. And then we have, in addition to that, which, which we do, which we cannot afford or cannot budget for in our, our regular budget is this 504 and outside placement positions, which we need the development fund for. Now, the 504 position is probably something that has to be built into our budget over time because again, this is not a special ed issue, this is a civil rights issue and an access issue. However, the CREG audit indicated that the outside placement position was transitional. We needed to do it for a number of years until we could establish the classes within district that we could and, and bring back the maximum number of students. There will always be some students whose needs will exceed what any school system can do. But, you know, while we're making a start with these three classes, you know, there are probably in the range of another four or five classes that could conceivably be brought back into our district over time.
Dr. Adamowski?
Yep.
I'd like to ask a question or a comment. Number nine, the quality case manager. I know many of our districts or surrounding districts have case managers.
Yes.
Are we looking, and I think we discussed this a little bit about compensation because there will be obviously more work involved, is this a 12-month or a 10-month position that we're looking at?
It, well, depending on whose model you look at, there are some that are, are simply the teacher or work here, right? There are others that will add a certain number of days to that, like five days or two days before, two days after. Generally, they have a little bit of time before or after school. We've had experience with that in other positions. Generally, there will be some release time. Many of the surrounding districts do a point two release time and, and, you know, there is the possibility for additional monetary compensations as well. But this is an extra duty position among the many that we have in our collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, thank you.
This is just one that we have not had and you're right, we are unusual in that we have not invested in this in the past.
Especially with the added responsibility in the CREG report, I think it's well needed. And we'll be sharing best practices with some of our other schools, like you mentioned, or other districts, I should say, that, that have case managers.
Yeah, we've looked, we've looked at several, including Stanford, and, you know, again, lots of models to look at.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions?
I just want to, pardon me for my question on the implementation. I see clearly here that you have January through July.
Oh, that's okay. This is something that we are all getting our hands around, right? And we'll help each other, right?
Okay. And Dr. Adamowski, you're going to be going on the updated recommendation for the 2016 Senate School Calendar?
So, my favorite topic, the calendar. You know, I would much rather be dealing with when we're going to go to school than when we're going to have off. But nonetheless, we had, I think, excellent cooperation from both the NFT and our PTO council and Mary and Michael, I'd like to thank you for the work you did on this where they gathered a great deal of input from parents and, and teachers. And, you know, while it is the board's legal responsibility to set the calendar, I think we always want to do it in the context of, you know, the best thinking of constituents and, and employees. So I have taken another try at a, a second draft of this and this is the draft I would like to present to you in February along with a companion 1718 calendar so that we can do what we discussed earlier and set the calendar for two years at a time. And I'll just review quickly the, the, some of the, the changes. The, the first issue I want to address is this issue of transitions and staggered opening because I think this has been, there has been some confusion around this issue. This is not the same process or has not been the same process at the kindergarten level as it has been at the sixth grade level. The kindergarten level, the students have come in, half of the students have come in on the first day of school and the other half on the second day of school and then they all come in, okay? That is, that is a process I'm recommending be maintained in this calendar because we can still guarantee 180, minimum 180 days of school for the children and, you know, in the opinion of our kindergarten teachers, as expressed through Ms. Jordan, you know, this is a, a good practice, it's one that is, is working and it does not create an unusual cost. In contrast, the way we have handled the sixth grade does because we've, we've had a day where we pay the entire staff of the middle school and only the sixth grade comes to school. And, you know, our, our cost of having a day of school is approximately $900,000 a day. And every time we have a half day, we waste close to a half a million dollars. Every time we bring in only one grade, we waste a lot of the commitment of our taxpayers to our education system and I think we have to be sensitive to that. So in place of that sixth grade current situation, I'm recommending that we have a sixth grade orientation. Now, there is no district that we can find in Fairfield County or anywhere in the state that does the sixth grade according to our prior practice. In fact, in most cases, the, the sixth grade just goes to school. However, there are a couple, Stanford being one, which do have sixth grade orientations and that's, that's what I'm recommending in, in this case. We would have the sixth graders come in on the new teacher work day, we would simply pay the sixth grade teachers the contractual rates for that. Students would come in, they would meet, they would take the bus in, they would meet their teachers, they would have an orientation to their subjects, they would get their lockers, they'd learn how to open them, they'd have lunch in the school, the cafeteria for the first time, take the bus back, typical orientation type schedule. So that, that was the first adjustment. We had both teacher and parent input on the issue of the February break and in response to that, I've added a day so that the professional development day would be on the Thursday, the 16th, the Friday and the Monday would be off for both students and teachers. So it would be three days combined with a weekend or five days for students and two days combined with a weekend or four days for, for teachers. And that seems to be what, what both parents and teachers have commented on and asked for. We have equalized the marking periods at the elementary level to the trimester. We will be doing professional development at the middle school level when the elementary conferences are being held and this will be very helpful because we'll be involved in the middle school redesign effort and this will be valuable time for middle school staff. There, there has been a parent issue over the number of half-days and the desire for our calendar to be more family friendly. You'll recall that in the calendar I presented to you initially, we had just one half-day at the end of the school year in June, the last day, as a result of the input from the teachers, I've extended that to two in this recommendation. And Columbus Day in the uniform calendar is not, is not a day off from school any, anymore. So without any snow days, that would give us an opening on the 31st of August and bring us to the end of the week on June 9th. Obviously, any snow days we have, we would extend to the other week. The, we have, we will have state testing in the last two weeks of March and the first week of April will be the makeup week and that will be, that will work, will coincide just before the, the April vacation. So all in all, logistically, it appears to be a, a good calendar and meet a, a great deal of the, I would say probably 90% of the input that was received. If I have a misgiving on this is that we simply do not have enough instructional time to close the achievement gap for children who need more instruction. And we're going to have to rely heavily on our partners in order to help us with summer learning experiences. We are anticipating that the high school summer bridge program will continue. Interestingly enough, there is no money in the local budget for this, nor has there been at any point in time. We have used the resources of the Carver Center in the past as well as a Nellie Mae Foundation grant. The Nellie Mae Foundation grant has now expired, so we will need to seek further support for that and we will need to have more students attend as well. But probably in next year's budget, I will be recommending that the board take some responsibility for the high school summer bridge program in terms of, of local funding because this is something that should be institutionalized into our schedule. We will use our Title I funds for summer learning in the Title I schools. We will use some of the Alliance funds to the extent we can. Remember, we could not take all those local expenditures out of the Alliance grant in one year, so half of them are still in there. We'll be in much better shape for that a year from now. But I know that under Anthony Allison's leadership, that Dorwok X has identified this issue of summer learning loss as one of the most critical issues for us in terms of closing the achievement gap. And there are things that we can do and we will, we will rely on our partners in Norwalk X to help. And I, I would say that trending forward, we will certainly have more and more summer learning opportunities. And as you know, in this strategic operating plan, at least our initial draft of it, this does call for the development of at least one year round, or one school on a year-round schedule that can serve as a choice for parents who want that for their, their, their children. So this is the calendar that I would intend to recommend in February along with a companion calendar for 1718 that is based upon the same structure so that we can adopt this for two years and everyone will have maximum advanced planning.
Any discussion, questions, Mr. Brownus?
Can I ask you a question, Stephen?
Yep.
On, on the summer school program or the freshman academy, do you know roughly what percentage of our freshmen participate, participate in that program between Norwalk and KFAM?
I think it was about a third if I'm not mistaken, but I will, I will have to check that and get you that information. Ralph, do you know the answer to that?
I think it's 100 each.
Oh, so less, less than, well, okay, that's just of the ninth graders, so I think it is about a third.
Okay. And then my other question would be, you know, I have a longstanding relationship with the Carver Center and I know they've been hoping that we could make some contribution towards this and/or to after-school, but I'm, I guess based on what you just said, that would not be possible in 1617?
Well, it is not in the current budget and as you know, when we started the current budget, we were, we were faced with a new teacher's contract, a $4 million overrun in special education. We are also growing as a school district. You know, we grew about, you know, close to 200 or, or over 100 students this year. Every time we do that, that's four additional teachers. So given all of those pressures on the budget, when we started, if we just left everything the same, it would be 9.5%. To get down to 3.9, no, we were not able to, to add that. However, I, I think you, you can certainly appreciate that something like a high school bridge program is a district responsibility and over the long term, we should not be dependent... dependent on, on donors to provide something as basic as that. Because we are in the situation we're in, we cannot require it, it's just voluntary. But again, this, this tells us, I mean, this gives us a, one of several indications of, of the direction we need to go in, and what we need to do in the future.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah, just a quick question on the calendar. So going forward, I guess in February, you wanna, you wanna set in stone the 1617 and 1718 calendar. So a year from now, we, we would, would we set forward the 1819 calendar, like in a year and a half ahead, is?
Well, you could, you could.
So we wanna establish every February?
You could do that. Some of the best school districts in the nation follow that practice.
Okay.
And your other alternative is to wait two years, and then do another two, but I, I certainly would be supportive of the calendar of two years in advance.
Thanks.
Just, just a comment. I need a little bit more time to digest this, so I might be sending you an email, maybe like on Monday, with a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Dr. Adamowski, I'd like to just ask, mention a couple of comments and questions. I think this calendar looks great. I think it's tweaked, I think it meets family needs, as well as some of the teachers as well, and also planning ahead. Comment, though, as far as freshman academy, and Ralph, you can maybe answer this also. I believe there was 100 child limit each school, with Bryan McMahon and Norwalk High School. I'm hoping at some point, we can expand that, because I think that's where you might have an influx of parents and students that are interested, and then you have that cutoff. And I know you have to sign up early. There's an orientation for both schools, and then if you're interested, you have to fill out an application and get it in. So I think it limits some of our students if we only have that 100 child allotment, or, you know, slot that we have. So I'm hoping with funds, whatever we can do, we can expand that if we're looking, obviously, to open that up to more children this summer. Because that's huge, especially in freshman year.
I think, I think at minimum, we have to accommodate every child that's willing to go, every student who is willing to go, and encourage more and more to go.
And also the dates, you know, they usually have a few dates, would be great. At some point, if we can open up to more dates and to more families, because I think a lot of families aren't even aware that we have freshman academy at both schools.
Well, you know, one of the advantages of a two-year calendar is we can roll that in a way that we can actually show the dates of the summer learning programs. Not only the freshman academy, but
Yes.
... the Title I summer schools, other summer learning opportunities that we would have on, at non-Title I schools, and so on.
One other quick comment. Veterans Day, I've heard some, from some families, that in some schools, we offer it. You know, we don't have school, we, you know, for a while, we did have school Veterans Day, we no longer do, but a way we could celebrate our veterans. You know, some schools, we have some veterans come in and have a presentation. I think we need that in all 19 schools.
Yeah, I think, I think this past year, I mean, I'm aware of some outstanding commemorations for our, our veterans in schools. I think there are a few schools that may be the exception, that are, have not done this, or have not done it well, and that'll be a supervisory issue for the future. And you're right, we do have a responsibility to use this as a, a learning opportunity.
And I think also, Mr. Kessimus for one second, if we can have that, where we're sharing best practices with all of our schools, like you mentioned, many of our schools have an amazing, dynamic program, but it's not within all of our schools. So I think 19 schools, we should have similar ceremonies.
Yep, you're right.
I just want to say the same thing I've heard from a lot of parents and teachers, that it's not being, the impact is not there anymore. It's losing its luster, the Veterans Day. They're not doing the celebrations, they're kind of squeezing things in just to get it in.
Well, I think this is something that we can address.
Any other questions? Ms. Harris?
I just wanna know, if, there was a happy medium with, with the unions. I know some of the teachers were, I know there was an issue about instructional hours being low, and some people not agreeing that they were low, and with the staggered entry. So I'm just, I, I know there was some compromise, but...
Yeah, so I've addressed the staggered entry issue.
So we're gonna have, I understand that, but I just...
Basically, no change in kindergarten, and that sixth, the sixth grade taking the form of a sixth grade orientation. As far as the amount of time, you know, this deals with, with another issue, because the original calendar I gave you had 182 days. This one has 181. We do not specify the number of teacher workdays in our calendar. There is an assumption that our calendar will be, you know, the norm, or representative of the norm, relative to the competitiveness of our salary levels. So in the second year, I will probably recommend the 182nd day, so that we have ample time to engage with the NFT in a discussion of, of this, which is basically impact bargaining, and have enough time to budget for it if, if additional compensation is involved. So, but I've, I've looked at the districts in Fairfield County, about half of them are at 181, and the other half are at 182, at the, at the current time. And again, I think we would have to compare how competitive our pay was to those in each category.
And then with the staggered entry, I'm assuming the sixth grade orientation was sort of, was a compromise?
It was a, you could, you could certainly view it that way, but it also is, we, at least we have a touchstone of other districts, two other districts doing this.
Was it Darian, I think it was Darian and Greenwich. So basically, you're still in conversation, it's not necessarily...
No, I think we've, we've had conversations, we've had input. This is what I will recommend to you in February.
Mr. Kessimus?
Just one more question. High schools, we're going to block scheduling next year?
That is a decision you made in the, a year ago, yes.
Now, now, I've, I've heard rumors that high schools are gonna be starting a little earlier, the bus of that, is that true?
No, it's being looked at. It has nothing to do with block scheduling. You can run a block schedule, starting at any time and ending at any time, given our current length of, of, of our day. However, it totally unrelated to that, is the fact that the CDC, Center for Disease Control, has now identified the early start times of high schools as one of the greatest health risks to high school students. Lack of sleep, lowering immune system, getting sick more, being under greater stress, so on and so forth. And this apparently relates to, and I'm not a scientist or a doctor, but the literature suggests that the biorhythm of a high school student is such that it reaches its peak around 10 o'clock in the morning, and peak time is until about 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon. In contrast, younger children have a younger, have a earlier biorhythm. And so if you were to do this in, in, in terms of developmental factors, you would have the youngest children going earlier, and the oldest children going later. Now, we're exactly in the middle, in the middle, so we, we have the middle in the middle, but we're exactly the opposite in terms of elementary and secondary now. I think it behooves us to look at incrementally over time, ways to move the high school a little later, and ways to move the elementary a little earlier, and we're looking at that relative to the bus schedules, which are very, very constraining, because we do triple routing, and we do a lot of busing. We bus 8,000 of 11,000 students, believe it or not. We, we do too much busing. But nonetheless, that, that is a constraint, but, but we may be able to make some progress on this gradually over time.
Thank you. Ms. Lee?
Yes. I do see here where you have made some adjustments to let the teachers' union for the days of that they requested. I'm seeing that you have added another half a day, and you have moved their PD day from the 6, 7, 17 to 16, so, and, and you have 181 days, so I guess a lot of the concerns that was there at the last meeting, he's addressed in this calendar.
Yeah, again, I, I think about 80 to 90% of the input received from both teachers and parents have been addressed here. And again, I'm very grateful to the leaders of both organizations for the time they took to poll people, get ideas, develop alternatives. And again, I, I'm also grateful for their flexibility, because I think everyone recognizes there is no perfect calendar from an individual standpoint. But we're trying to get something that meets the needs of, you know, the vast majority of our employees and our clients.
One, one quick point. One, one issue I was following rather closely was the staggered entry with sixth grade. I, I understand that you've made the decision that it's, it's the best option in your mind to move forward with the orientation. I, I wonder if we notice that there is a measurable backlash on this type of a situation, where there is an identified level of uncomfortability, or, or a lessening of integration for those students? If this is something that we could revisit in a future calendar year to reinsert back into the calendar?
I mean, I, I think, I think you're right, I think we need to try these things. I would point out to you that the vast majority of districts in the state of Connecticut don't do anything. They don't have a staggered entry, and they don't have an orientation. You just go to school as a sixth grader on the first day of school. Now, we were able to identify two districts that do, but clearly, they are in a minority, and we will be in a minority doing this. The, the system we were using, no one else did. And again, I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable that we could be responsible to the taxpayers of the community by, you know, continuing a, a practice like that. But yeah, absolutely, there may be a better way to, to do this, and we should evaluate this and see, see how it goes.
I, I completely agree on, on any of the points you just brought up. The one thing that does jump out of my mind is the fact that the district has done this for years. It's been something that nobody else has done, mind you, but it's something that the model has been, what Norwalk has gone with. So as we move forward, obviously, teachers are possibly gonna have to readjust how they have addressed this, and this is something that we'll have to wrap our arms around, rather than just, you know, setting the schedule. And I hope that we are implementing that as we move forward, and really building a coalition to address some of those issues that may arise, as we've had this situation that's been in place for such a long time, and are now gonna have to work with some growing pains as we move forward and through the new model.
Yeah, so change is difficult, even little changes can be. I, I'm hoping also that this issue will be informed by the redesign of our middle schools. Because right now, we know from the data that we are not doing well with transitions. You know, pre-K to K, 5 to 6, 8 to 9, and of the three, our worst area of performance is 5th to 6th. Our student achievement takes a nosedive from 5th to 6th. And so the things we are doing, it's fairly evident that the things that we are doing in transition, at this point, are not terribly beneficial in terms of student achievement. And it may very well be that in the redesign of our middle schools, particularly the sixth grade experience, that there would be something more structural built in, you know, similar to what we're doing with the, with the freshman academy, or some way of connecting students to the school earlier, you know, even, even during their fifth grade year. There's, there's, there are other possibilities here. Thank you.
Mr. Brownus?
I just wanna make one mention, that in 2011, when we had the impact of Hurricane Irene, we eliminated all staggered entry. And, you know, I don't think we ever heard a problem from anybody about, you know, that whatever, kids were traumatized during the school year, anything like that, it went off without a hitch.
Any other discussion, comments?
Thank you, ma'am, chair.
Dr. Adamowski, we also have a presentation by Norwalk X.
We do.
Student survey.
And Anthony Allison is, is here to do that. My understanding, this, this actually, your consideration of this precedes my tenure here. This was something that was brought to the board's attention last year, worked its way through the curriculum committee. There was, I believe, one board discussion in the spring of last year. There was a need expressed on the part of several board members to reconsider this, and that's why Mr. Allison is back.
Good evening. Thank you, Acting Chair, and board members, and Dr. Adamowski. I believe you all received a copy of tonight's PowerPoint, I just wanna make sure that you have that. And I know that the two nearest board members received further information about the Search Institute that I'm gonna speak to tonight, and the evolution of the social-emotional development work that Norwalk X and its partners have been working on. And the previous board members all received a packet, I believe in August, or sometime that Mike Lyons passed out to all of you. The opportunity that we're gonna be speaking to tonight is to get a better understanding of the social-emotional, snapshot of the social-emotional life of all the 11 to 18-year-olds living in the city of Norwalk. That constitutes basically 7th to 12th grade. And how we have framed our work within Norwalk X around this particular initiative is to really look at it as a community survey. This is not a survey of the students of the Norwalk Public Schools. This is to get a better snapshot of the lives of the young people that live in our city. It is a completely anonymous survey, and we're asking the Norwalk Public Schools, as a partner within Norwalk X, to be the implementer of the survey. So I just wanna kind of give you that as a, just a, before we move forward to the rest of the presentation. I believe all of you, or most of you, are fairly aware of the work of Norwalk X, which, as I said, including the Norwalk Public Schools, represents over 100 organizations and individuals that have agreed to the principles of collective impact, and who adopted three specific areas that they wanted to focus on for community-level outcomes. And they are around academic support for the Cradle to Career Continuum, looking at the social-emotional development and health and wellness as well. And as I mentioned, it's a cradle-to-career body of work, so we're looking at prenatal all the way to 21. And social-emotional became a very, very important part of our work. When we were deciding on the community-level outcomes, again, it was a cross-sector of community partners, including the Norwalk Public Schools. Social-emotional development and learning became a, a very, very important part of the decisions that were being made by this cross-sector body. Reason being is that many of the district and community partners that were involved in work that, that was supporting youth, whether it be in out-of-school-time-related activities, or in need of direct services, were really speaking about anecdotal evidence of the need for greater capacity of support of children and families. And the other thing that became very clear was that the, there was not a strong alignment between the district and our, our school, our community-based organizations that were providing the services that were being recommended. So again, it was anecdotal, we were hearing from guidance counselors, we were hearing from principals, we were hearing from the community-based organizations about the need for greater capacity and better understanding of what the needs were for young people in the district. So again, why do we want to prioritize social-emotional development? The research shows, right off the bat, that the positive impact on better academic performance, improved attitudes and behaviors, fewer high-risk behaviors, and reduced emotional distress. Those are fairly, you know, again, universally recognized as critically important factors that the social-emotional development support for young people can provide. The process that developed this, the, the idea of working with the Search Institute, these were all the different organizations that met for close to four to five meetings, to make the decision to, and it was very well researched by the two chairs, Craig Kreller and Mary Kate Locke from FCA, who went and saw, I think it was two presentations by the Search Institute. Mr. Conley had been involved in Noggetuck with implementing the Search, the Developmental Asset Survey, but this body right here was the, the group who decided to work with the Search Institute. And again, the, the survey right here, you know, here are all the basic bullet points around it. The survey's, it's been around since 1990, and it's been updated, obviously, but it's been given to more than 4 million young people across the United States. And I've been at, you know, Norwalk X is a part of Strive Together Network, and I've seen two presentations by the Search Institute in two different communities that have implemented it with fidelity for the past 10 years. And the, the way that they work with that, the results and the data has, you know, I don't have that report in front of me, but I can speak to the fact that first, that it was being implemented by the schools, then they turned it over to the youth to be the ones who coordinated all the efforts to... ones who coordinated all the efforts to implement it, so it became a peer-to-peer relationship piece. And that was pretty extraordinary to hear them speaking to all of that. The survey's completely anonymous. It's not a diagnostic tool. All we're getting is anecdotal, excuse me, my favorite word too, and I can't remember. What's the word I want, Rob? Thank you, aggregate data. And, and that data will basically be speaking to a variety of different trends. It's giving us a real baseline report about the specific needs that we're speaking to. So for instance, in one of the surveys that you have there, and I believe it was the one from Waterbury, here's an example. In fourth grade, it was, it asked how many of the fourth grade, or that, excuse me, in sixth grade, how many of the sixth graders were feeling support from an adult? And I think they said around 60, 65 percent. By the time they got to 10th grade, it was down to 30. So that's a trend that we, you could look at and it also on the rise of the use of drugs and alcohol. So you could, if you wanted to, kind of just look at that data and say, well, is there a cause and effect? I don't know the answer to that, but you could, you could, you can draw some conclusions about what specific needs those students have as they're feeling more and more detached from a positive adult in their lives. And that's just one example of some of the data that will be ascertained from the, the survey. And again, the results of the survey, we reported in aggregate by age and, and grade level, if, if, if we choose to. And again, as I said, the survey's a community survey. The Norwalk Public Schools is a vehicle for Norwalk Acts to administer the survey. Whoop, there they go. So our goal would be to administer the survey in February of 2016, so that would be done in the seventh through 12th grade. It could be done, done in different blocks. We would work with your principals and guidance counselors to arrange the most effective way to do it. It takes about 45 minutes to be done. It would be done in pencil and paper. All those would be collected up. We would send it off to the Search Institute and they would give us back a report in about three to four weeks. Again, it's using that data to get a baseline snapshot, use the data to develop strategic community alignment of resources in support of the social emotional needs of young people. We just don't know what those are yet and we need this type of data to be able to support the district and our community as well. And then, again, to use the data to create social emotional action plans. And that is where we want to go with being able to do this community survey and I look forward to your questions on it.
Any questions, Mr. Adamaski?
Yeah. I remember last time we had a conversation, I believe on the opt-out option, and, and we had another conversation on the, who would be responsible for the results since this, you know, comes from Norwalk Public Schools. I'm not clear as to who's going to end up having the end results whenever this comes back.
So, it's a good question. So, Norwalk Acts being the community partnership, we, we suggest, being that Norwalk Public Schools is already a partner within, within Norwalk Acts, Norwalk Acts would just have the data and we would share the data with the community and say, this is the snapshot. Again, it's not a reflection upon the Norwalk Public Schools, it's nothing of the kind. All it's speaking to is a cohort of 11 to 17-year-olds. They just happen to go to the Norwalk Public Schools. And that was the way that we really thought to present the data around that survey.
Because I know there was some concerns about the invasive, you know, some of these questions that, you know, are invasive, you know, kids answer, because it depends on the mood of the child. If the child is having a bad day, they might answer these things and make, you know, their family or, you know, you know, because they're angry or something, it's a little tip from the night before. You know, I got angry with mom, so you're going to give me the survey tomorrow and I'm going to put down, well, mom, don't do something right. And so those, I, I think that was one of the concerns, the last time it just came. And, and I'm not too familiar as to, I, I know, I know you said that you have a bunch of community partners and all that, and the, I'm not sure who you're, you're partnering, partnering with or, or, you know, on this. I, I see this list here, but I, but there's other community agencies out there, like for instance, the Rona Court, you know, tenant, you know, association.
So the housing, the Housing Authority was involved, Public Schools, Silver Mine, Carver Center, Child Guidance Center. I mean, I don't, surely, I think you would be, if you had walked in that room, I think you would feel really comfortable with who was at that table. I truly do. I really do. I mean, there's 50 people in that room.
Right, but I, I just want to make sure those 50 people is, is, you know, because Norwalk Public Schools represents all children, everyone, and, you know, something like this that, that is that invasive into, you know, someone's life, private life and not, you know, I guess it's okay if, if that opt-out option is there.
Sure.
And it's communicated to people that they have that opportunity to, you know, not participate in something like this if they feel that it's going to be too invasive into their private lives.
Right, remember, it is anonymous, completely anonymous.
Yeah, but then it breaks it down into a certain type of, you know, I, I read a couple of these things, it's then, what are you, you know, you, how do you describe yourself as an American Indian, Asian, Black, African? So it does put certain categories and, you know, certain, you know, segmented groups, you know, and then it's done, broken, broken down by middle school, high school and all that, so you kind of like get another general idea of what, because you could break it down.
But we don't know any individual.
Right, but it, it, it puts, it put a mark, mark on a certain type of group. You know, you know, I'm not, you know, you can say that Hispanics or Blacks or Asian, 16-year-olds have a hard time in school because their parent, depending on how the kids, because their parents drinking or doing drugs and now they're doing drugs and, you know, things like that. It, it's a little, it, it is a little more personal and just, you know, you know, and it gets into people's private lives and.
No, I, I, Shirley, I completely appreciate that and I get where you're coming from. I think one of the things that everybody in this room would agree to is we want to be able to provide the best support for children in the city of Norwalk.
Yes.
And if we don't know what those needs are, we can't do the job that we want to do. I know what your concerns are, I know that, and I appreciate everything that you're saying there, I get it. But I think that without having the data that we need as a community to support the young people that we're all in charge and accountable for doing, we wouldn't be as effective as we want to be. I'm not saying that this is the be-all, the end-all, but we have absolutely no data of this sort whatsoever. I would argue a little bit in just in the fact that we do know demographics from the school district, for instance, right? We do know that because we publish those. We know breakdown of test scores because we publish those. So, and those, and that's, you know, done in, in an aggregate way as well. This, it's, and it's really not that different in this case as well. I know the questions obviously are a bit different, but if we don't know this, we won't be able, as effective to be able to provide the services necessary to support this.
And that's, that's, I, I understand that too. And my, well, another concern of mine is the distribution of this information. I, I know you said you're partnering with those people there and when the results come back with all this data, I know Norwalk Acts will have it and hopefully Norwalk Public Schools.
Absolutely.
Will have their hands on it as well, but will that data remain within Norwalk Acts or, you know, will you be distributing it out to different agencies or, you know, and, and who can get their hands on it? Because let's say a, and, and like Save, for instance, you know, if they wanted to get some part of the data and they're not listed on there.
No, if Reverend Dancy called me tomorrow and said, hey, I want to make sure that I'm a part of the data, when we work with the data to commit, to create the action plans, absolutely. So if you look at the bottom there, Shirley, we would reconvene around that data, the original partners, to start to develop the appropriate action plans with the school district to be able to start to address some of the concerns that everybody was having around what the data was presenting.
You know.
No, I hear it exactly. No, I get it. I get it, Shirley. I hear you.
Mr. Kasimis?
Yeah. I appreciate the work you guys do for the community.
Yeah.
I think I sent Mike a list of questions that you can remove, because I have some major challenges with the survey as well. Is that a possibility?
There was 20 of them that you wanted out.
Yes, at least.
And that would, that would really hurt the integrity of the survey.
How about a few? Is that a possibility?
There are, I know FCA, who works with this survey all year long, they do this, this is the main focus of their work with their Aspire program, they, they eliminate, I think, one.
Just one?
Just one. And they work specifically with every one of their students.
Let me just throw this out. You said there's value to the questions. Well, what kind of value you're going to gain, I'm not trying to be funny, but what kind of value you're going to get out of asking an 11-year-old what type of birth control method they use? Is it a shot, an implant, a ring, a patch, a condom, a foam, a diaphragm, an IUD?
11-year-olds are having sex.
But what kind of, I mean, what value are you going to get out of that? And, and I don't want, if I had an 11-year-old, I don't want that question asked.
Okay, so if, if, if the, if you all feel that there are certain questions that you would like out, and I respect that a, a great deal, we would work with the Search Institute to make sure that those are not included.
Now, parents going to be given a copy beforehand?
I think that was the agreement, yes.
They will?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then they can opt out?
Is that how we plan to work with it?
They can come in to review it.
They can come in to review it, that's right, yeah.
When, the day of the test or?
No, there'd be time to carry.
Yeah, we haven't figured out the logistics of that part, but you have, they would have a, come in and have a chance to review the survey.
Okay, huh? Are, are you aware that there is a, a state survey that is used by the other districts?
Yeah, yeah.
So why, just real quick, why are we using this? Which means we can't compare ourselves to the other districts. What kind of standalone?
Right, two things. One, to be honest, Artie, and I appreciate you guys sending that to us. It was more invasive than.
I, I don't think so.
I'll, I'll, we'll have coffee, we'll go over those questions. We'll go over those questions and have a good time with it. I, I think, I think if we had a chance to talk about it, I think you might see it a little bit differently. But the main part is that that's a student survey and we're not, we're not surveying students, we're surveying children of the city of Norwalk. And there's a very clear distinction. This is not about looking at the students in the Norwalk Public Schools to say, this is, here are the students, we're looking at a community-level survey and they're two distinctly different.
But you're giving it to students.
Right, the children who live in Norwalk.
You said it's not a student survey.
It isn't. They just happen to be going to Norwalk Public Schools. If I could do it at the Carver.
Maybe it's semantics.
Nah, I think it's important, Artie. I really do. Because if they were going to the Carver Center, or if we could do the survey for 8,000 kids at the Carver Center, we would use the Carver Center. You're just the only vehicle that we have who has the kids at one time. But it's a survey of the children who live in Norwalk, not of students.
There is Boston area, the parents in Boston of a school, I'm not going to mention it, they're suing the Boston area district because of surveys like this, because they felt it was an inappropriate survey. It says here that they pitted parents against parents, asking invasive questions into their family lives that they didn't want their kids to be asked. So I just hope that we don't open ourselves up to a lawsuit by parents. Because some of this, I mean, honestly, I mean, I look at these questions and I shake my head and, you know, you ask a question here, have you ever tried to kill yourself? I mean, I've got family members who killed themselves. That's a deep question.
It is.
And I don't think it's, honest, I'm just being honest.
No, I know.
I'm not getting on you, I just think it's inappropriate to ask an 11-year-old, have you ever thought of killing yourself? Because that almost validates, like, hey, it's a great, tell us, have you ever felt like killing yourself? And that, I mean, my line of work, I deal with that. Three weeks ago, I left this room because a young girl at my church was looking to kill herself and I spent the night with her to make sure her and her parents were okay. I just don't think it's appropriate for a, a survey to ask, have you ever tried once, twice? Anyway, this is just my thoughts. Something I think we really need to sit down, and I'd love to sit down and have coffee with you and talk about this.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. I, I do appreciate your comments, Mr. Kasimis. I actually did review the, I got my hands on the 2015 Connecticut School Health Survey, the one that you were mentioning, and the questions in there are quite intrusive. In fact, the question that you just mentioned is listed in there along with, during the past 12 months, how many times did someone you were dating or going out with purposely try to control you or emotionally hurt you? Which then goes on to have a very similar question about having to have four sexual acts on them. This is the Connecticut survey. This is the one that you were just speaking.
Well, I was asking if we could remove some, too.
I understand that, but, but, but this, but understand that this is the one that is then mandated without change. My concern is this, these are questions and these are realities that students are facing. I've worked with teenagers, I've worked with 11-year-olds, I've worked with 12-year-olds in my youth group experiences and unfortunately, as much to your concern as well, it's, it's very personal, but it's also happening. I personally, in my opinion, am someone that doesn't want to turn a blind eye to these things. I want to look at them. I'd rather have the answers and know the demographics and know the results in order to proactively respond to them. If we have a large segment of students who are all saying a certain stream of thinking, we as a district, we as, not as a district, we as a community can come together and say, we have an issue here. These children in our community are all experiencing a similar thought process, are all experiencing a similar situation that we can't address, rather than looking at it in a reactive scenario when a child does try to commit suicide or a child is being abused at the home and coming to school, beaten and bruised. I, for one, would rather look at uncomfortable data and be able to address it from there, rather than react to the individual situations that occur that are already happening. So, as far as comments go, I'm very passionate about this, as you can probably tell, but those are my opinions. And I did review the survey that was given to us by Norwalk Acts and I found it different than the state-mandated one as well, because it asks the questions differently. And that I appreciated. So with that all. Be quiet.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussions, comments? Ms. Harris?
I guess my major question is if the survey is anonymous, how are you, aside from whether you aggregate or have the data disaggregated, how are you going to pinpoint who you need to help? Individually or like in, in large groups? And how is that going to help?
So, it would be done by age and it can be broken down and if we, and they'll indicate age and grade. So we'll have a, you know, again, aggregate data around that age group. That will, again, we're not looking, it's not a diagnostic tool, so we're not looking to really pinpoint individuals that we want to be able to support. But one of the things, again, going back to the anecdotal data that we're getting from the school district, in particular from high school principals and guidance counselors, is that there's just such a need for a better understanding of where their high school students are at, where those children are at, in terms of their social emotional life. And they're referring young people to agencies within the city, but they don't have the capacity to meet the need and they're not very clear about what the need is. And what the survey will do for us is help to pinpoint more and more specific areas of focus for the district and our community partners to be able to align the resources to support those children. So again, it's working from a kind of a, the big picture piece and this kind of whittling certain aspects of it down that will, again, support what we know to be a need, but it'll be looking at very specific areas that have been identified through the trends in the, in the data.
So, so again, when you get the information, then what happens? Just say you, you surveyed this whole room, then what will you do? Will you then just have programs at these high schools and offer the children the ability to attend programs? How will, how will you treat major issues?
So there'll be, so all this data will come into the community and the folks who are actively engaged in, whether it be Mid-Fairfield Child Guidance, whether it be FCA, Carver Center, you name the community-based organization that has the opportunity to provide those supports, we will begin to develop the action plans, again, working with the district around the data that will be able to either increase access to existing programs that are providing the appropriate support, or looking at different ways that we can, I wouldn't say create new programs, but the ability to support the youth, young people that we have not been able to address. But we just don't know what it is yet. We just don't know the focus. All we know is that, at most, most of the agencies are at capacity or above and have waiting lists for the types of support that the children and family needs. So we know that, that we already know. And, and we just don't have the capacity to meet the need.
I have one last question. So, and some surveys are anonymous and some of them are not. How are we, and some of them are what they call semi-anonymous? So how are we making sure that this is strictly anonymous, if we're saying that it's anonymous? And not one of those that we can kind of go back and, if we need to, go back and pinpoint an individual?
I wouldn't even answer it because.
I think Ralph, do, do you understand that there are, I think you and I had that discussion, or maybe it wasn't you, but there are.
I mean, like if a kid says, I'm actually thinking of killing myself, can we do something?
Well, that just, no, my, well, that, we definitely want to do something. Well, that, just, no, my, well, that, we definitely want to do something, but I'm, I'm wondering how anonymous is anonymous.
These are online, too, just so you know, it's actually paper and pencil.
Right, and paper and pencil, you can put like a little number or something. I'm just asking, I'm not saying this is what we're gonna do. I'm just making sure anonymous is anonymous.
What I would say is that Search Institute has been around forever. They know, they know how to do this. If you go online and look at their work, it's one of the most respected organizations anywhere that's doing this type of work. They know how to work through anything like that. I, to be honest, I, I just never would have thought that, when they say anonymous, I know it to be anonymous.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't bring it to you if it wasn't.
And I guess my real concern is what the outcomes are. What exactly is the plan? Or are we gonna figure out the plan after we get the information?
Yeah, we, we need the data to make the plan. But that's our decision-making process. If we have the data, we can't make a decision without data.
No, I understand that, but there's scenarios, like you have the questions in front of you. If we get this amount of kids that have this issue, then this is what we're gonna do if we get this amount. So I don't know if that's been pre-thought, or we're just looking for the data.
We, we need the data, because then we wouldn't even know who to convene, partner-wise, around that.
Well, anecdotally, have, I guess, since the guidance counselors mentioned this, have they anecdotally given you some leads on what the issues are?
Yep, absolutely.
And then anecdotally, can we figure out scenarios that, if this happens, this is what we're going to do? I mean, they seem to already know what the issues are, from, from what you're saying. The counselors have already said, we need to, we have this information...
They don't know the scale of it whatsoever. We don't know, as a community, know the scale of it. And it's much bigger than we think it is, the issues, specific issues that the kids are dealing with. I mean, the stress level of high school students is way beyond anything that we can comprehend at this moment. That's number one. Feelings of isolation and alienation are far greater than we want to really agree to. So just those two right, right there, how do we, as a community, and as a community partnership, start to address some of those issues? And if we don't do that collectively, we won't be successful.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're quite welcome. Mr. Anderson?
Really briefly, as, as those comments were brought up, it, it, it brings the point, you know, I, I appreciate Ms. Harris's comments on the guidance counselors and having an understanding of some of the things that are going on. But what I look at in that situation is, you have certain individuals who have an idea from the perspective of a few students that they've spoken with. This is a broad-spectrum sweep of all of the populace. And, you know, as much as I, I would love to be able to say, our, our guidance counselors fully understand every single issue that's going on, I know as a student that was in the schools that long ago, I wasn't comfortable telling my guidance counselor everything. In fact, I didn't tell my guidance counselor half the things I was going through. And, you know, I think that they're definitely giving us an idea, and I think that what the guidance counselors have given us in this case is the true mandate for a survey like this. We see the iceberg, the tip of it. We don't see what's underneath. And I think that this is what's going to give us the opportunity to see what's underneath that tip, so we can really work on building the necessary tools to help the children of our community through the amazing partners that Mr. Allison's been talking about, along with the resources that we have here currently. So that's just, again, my opinion, as I hear the, the questions about, you know, specifically coming from guidance counselors. I look at this as having an idea, there's, there's an alert coming from a guidance counselor, now we can look systematically through the whole system, what's going on, to get an even bigger picture outside of the analysis of a few.
I'll just, real briefly, I used to run the Ivy Dream Program, the Norwalk Chapter. And so, and all of the young people I worked with lived in Washington Village, and ranging from fifth to eighth grade when I first started. And the vast majority of those, of those kids, if you looked at risk factors, you know, that they speak to, every one of them, if you had ten of them, every one of them had seven or above, right? They had, it was just enormous. And luckily, they were going to West Rocks and had a good relationship with Dr. Moore, and Jackie Robeson was working there. And Jackie is one of the, just one of the great people of the planet. And she taught me a lot. And one of the things that she just started to talk to me about was that, you know, when I was working with eighth graders four years ago, those fifth graders are now dealing with the issues that eighth graders were dealing with then. And she would just ramp that up. So every single year, she was seeing the issues of eighth graders from the year four, now seventh graders, now sixth graders, now fifth graders were dealing with issues that only ninth graders were dealing with a couple of years before. And it was a very, it was, she painted a very stark picture, and she said, we don't, I don't fully understand this. And when I think about her and her work, I think about this survey, or the opportunity that this survey provides for us, is to get a much better understanding of things that are happening in real time that she wasn't even able to really comprehend. And she's, you know, one of the most talented people I know. She saw it coming, but she just wasn't able to, to really, at the speed and the magnitude of the changes that were happening with the, you know, the kids that she loved. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there as a piece of information.
Dr. Krybikor, did you have a comment?
No, I'm, I'm all set.
Okay. I just wanted to add, and then I'll go around again. Thank you so much, first of all, for coming here and presenting this. I think maybe there, I think we all agree to disagree, and I think we're all passionate, all of us, about education and surveys, and many of us have kids, even Mr. Meek has little ones, but many of us have kids in the elementary, middle, and high schools, so we realize, I think many of us might not realize, including myself, the magnitude of certain things that are going on in the schools. And we can't be experts on everything, and we don't try to be, but there is a lot going on. And I'm hopeful, maybe at some point, we can look through some of the questions or some of the concerns some of the board members had on some of the questions, if that's possible.
You all, and the packets that you got, everybody got a sample survey, so take a look at that. You also have Waterberry's report and Dan Barry's, excuse me, Darian's report.
Okay, thank you.
All right, just quickly, the last slide says that you're administering it in February.
That's our goal, yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm just, didn't know if that was a done deal, if we voting on it?
It used to say October.
Okay, thank you.
So, we had to move to February.
Ms. Mosby?
Information. I just want, whenever, if we decide to go down this road, how, you know, the monitoring part of it, the implementation part of it, when, you know, giving the survey, when the survey is given, how it's gonna be implemented and monitored? Because I know, at our last conversation, there was conversations floating around about the middle school, because you're talking about kids like in seventh grade, and they said in middle school, that they might have someone sitting there to help them. And I, and before all this, I'd like to get more information on the opt-out options, and then on the parents reviewing the survey. Because right now, I heard you, Brenda, is that you guys are still working on how to, you know, put all that together. I need to have some concrete information on, you know, how, the opt-out option, how that's gonna be relayed out there to parents, how parents have the opportunity, if they want to review this survey, so they can feel comfortable with their seventh grader, you know, taking something like this, and how it's gonna be implemented in each, you know, school areas, who's gonna be responsible for it, who's gonna monitor it. And going back to what Jerel said, that you never know if it's not being monitored, that someone might put a number one, two, or three, we don't know. So I'm just, I wanna figure out or know who's gonna be, the steps to, to all that stuff before we put a survey like this. If we decide to go with a survey, survey like this, we need to have all the, everything, jot it down, so that we know, you know, what options are out there, instead of saying, well, we'll figure it out later. No, I think something this, this invasive into our lives, we need to have some, some plan out there that we, we know that we can touch.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions?
I just have one final. To Eric's point, I understand that there is a need. I've raised kids, I have been a kid, and I work with kids. So I understand it. My biggest thing is the end result. That's what my biggest issue is, is what is the plan, what the end result, and also the privacy. So that's all I wanted to add.
So, you know, all I'll say is, in conclusion of this, Norwalk Public Schools is the only vehicle to be able to implement the survey on the scale that we're talking about. If the Carver Center had seven thousand seats after school, we would have asked the Carver Center to implement the survey. And they would have asked the parents of the community to opt out. Norwalk Public Schools is the only opportunity on the level that we're talking about to be able to do it. That's why we're asking the district to be the vehicle to implement the ser, this community survey. That's number one. Number two, it's an anonymous survey, period. I would not sit here before you threatening or endangering that aspect of this work. I wouldn't do it. I would not. And I don't think anybody from the committee that was involved in, in selecting this would not for a second do that. And third, you know the work of Norwalk Acts. Everything is about using that data to make decisions. So we're not gonna sit on data that's speaking to specific needs. We're gonna convene the appropriate people to have the right conversation about what actions to take. We wouldn't be doing this if, or asking and trying to move this forward to support the children of the community if it was just gonna sit on a table. It's a waste of our time. This is an opportunity that we have for the first time to get a good understanding of the social-emotional needs of the children in our community. And I think, I think all of us would agree, it would be a huge opportunity for us. So I thank you for that.
I, I know that you said that, if you had the number of children at the Carver Norwalk School, the children here in Norwalk School, I'm not trying to be mean or anything, but the children in Norwalk School are children that, they, they, they have to be in school. They always have, they don't have a choice. Either you put your kids in public or private school, but you have to educate your kids, or else you're gonna get in trouble with, with the law. So, so by that, they are, the Carver parents have a choice, if they want your kids to, or just send other, you know, agencies like that, if, if, if they want. But I'm saying that, Norwalk School, our children, there's, there's not a choice for the parents. You have to, you have to put your kids here. And, and I'm, I'm concerned because, okay, if we decide that, if this is a vehicle, that we're all, we could get data on all of our children, it's through Norwalk School, who else is gonna come in six months or a year from now and tell us that we want to do something with Norwalk School children, so we can get data on them? I'm, I'm not knocking Norwalk Acts, because like you said, I'm just saying that, by taking this step here, we might open the door to other people coming in, saying that we need to get access to all these children, and the only way to get access to them is through Norwalk School.
But the Norwalk Public Schools would say no, but I, I just reminded that Norwalk Schools was part of making the decision to use the Search Institute to do the survey.
I, well, I don't, I, I didn't agree a hundred percent at that, but, you know, I, you know. But it's one way to, it's, it's, my point is that, once we open the door to start giving out our information on, on our children, then it opens door for someone else, and they could come in and say, why did you give to this type of agency? We're just like that agency, why can't we get the data? And it, it opens up a lot. But then, it's not my decision, I'm, I'm, on my own, it's, whatever happens, come down with the board. But those are some of the concerns right there at, at, at this time, is that, but our kids, and what you have to remember, our kids are not volunteer kids coming in here. They, they have to be in school. And parents, no choice, you know, they, unless they wanna, you know, go choose to, but they have to have their kids in school. And, and we want our parents to feel comfortable and free to have their kids in school without going through where maybe these agencies are gonna come in and start trying to survey our kids. That's all.
Are we okay with question, any more questions, discussion? Okay. Thank you, Anthony, very much. We appreciate you having the presentation tonight and going through it with us. Okay, next item on the agenda, actions, consent calendar. We have six-two A, approval of personnel, excuse me, six-two B, approval of budget transfers, if any, six-two C, approval of trips. I'll briefly read this, Ponus Ridge Middle School to Ivertown, Connecticut for Nature's Classroom, Newark High School Winter Guard to Dayton, Ohio, Center for Global Studies to Guatemala Service Tour, Bry McMahon High School to West Palm Beach, Florida, golf trip, Newark High School Winter Percussion to Dayton, Ohio for the World Championship, Rotten Middle School to Tokyo, Japan, Roatton Elementary School to Boston, Mass, and Ponus Ridge Middle School to Washington, DC, eighth-grade field trip. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Mr. Anderson, a second. Mr. Barbous, any questions or discussions? All in favor? Unanimous. Next, on our actions, we have number three, approval of the Alliance Grant, General Improvements Application, second submission by January twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen. Dr. Adam Asweed, you wanna elaborate?
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Mr. Hamilton to come up for this. You're, you're aware that we've had the opportunity of this made available to the Alliance District for these limited building grants, right? We made an initial submission, you're aware, in the fall, and this is the second submission. So you've, you, I think you've had this in advance, but Tom, if you could briefly summarize it for the benefit of the public?
Sure. This is the, the round two of funding under the Alliance District grant. Incidentally, we did just receive word today that the state has approved the lion's share of what we submitted in the first round of funding. They did disallow the cleaning equipment, which I thought perhaps they might, they did disallow the cleaning equipment that Bill Hodel had asked for. And they also did not agree to fund the vinyl asbestos tile replacement, because that is, at least in certain circumstances, eligible for regular school reimbursement fundings. And this program was set up to fund those types of projects that aren't eligible for regular school reimbursement. So, but all the other projects they did fund that we had requested, so the total that they, that they just approved was, I'm sorry, I thought I had that written on me. Yeah, so they, they did approve, out of the three-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand we had originally submitted, they disallowed roughly forty-nine thousand for those items I just mentioned. In any event, that has caused the staff, Bill Hodel and Karen Bartron, to re, to come up with some new proposals, which are before you. It's color-coded, so the items that are in the dark blue were approved by the state, the items in the red, we had indicated, when this was put together, we had word that they were likely gonna be denied. And then the items in the light blue are the second submission that we're proposing to make for the end of January. Again, you've seen most of these items. There are a handful of new items, a column on the right identifies those amounts that are either increased or are new. So you'll see the pool repair, Norwalk High School pool repair, we had on the original list we provided to you, but we did increase that amount slightly based on updated information on the cost of that project. We've added furniture replacement at all district schools as a new project. We also added the visitor management system, which is a school security system. It's a Raptor visitor system that will better keep track of visitors in our school buildings. Right now, it's a largely manual process. This will be an automated process that will link with state databases and so forth. And a number of school districts in Connecticut are using, using that system.
Are they gonna need computers for this?
Um, they will.
Well?
Their existing computers will be, will be fine.
The other new projects on the second page, Cranberry Elementary School and Roatton Elementary School, projects replacing a dividing wall in the gym at Cranberry that's not operating properly, and new mats at Roatton Elementary School. And finally, Fox Run in Cranberry redesigning the entrance canopy to redirect snowfall away from the walkways going into both of those schools. So we're just asking for approval on the revised list. We do intend to submit a second round of funding by the January twenty-ninth deadline and, and keep these projects moving.
Great, okay. Mr. Meek?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go to approve. The first-line item, McMahon's Stage Spotlight, what, what color is that?
Yellow. Oh, yellow? Uh, that was not denied. That project, as I understand it, is, has been...
I just don't see anything in your color chart for that soft orange.
Yeah, it's not crossed out, so I, I think, I think that's maybe a printer malfunction of some sort, but...
I guess it's green for go. I guess it's green for go.
Yeah, that, my understanding is that, yes, that project is still on the list.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Any other questions, discussion? Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Dr. Krevikor, second. Mr. Barbis, all in favor? Okay, there you go. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. I'm going to need you again, so don't go too far. Okay. Next action item, number four, is approval for designation of February as Black History Month. I'm going to briefly read the document. Black History Month, February 1st through February 28th, 2016. The Norwalk Board of Ed is proud to recognize Black History Month at Norwalk Public Schools. Throughout the month of February, we encourage all of our schools, teachers, and students to set aside time to celebrate the achievements of Black Americans and to recognize the central role of African-Americans in U.S. history. The origins of Black History Month date back to 1926, with a week-long observance initiated by the American historian Dr. Carter G. Woodson. In 1975, the observance was expanded into a month-long celebration as part of the nation's bicentennial. Since 1976, every U.S. president has officially designated the month of February as Black History Month. The Board of Education and Norwalk Public Schools are pleased to join in this annual tribute. Every year, schools throughout Norwalk highlight Black History Month in a wide variety ways, of ways. Students learn about the accomplishments of a wide range of historical figures, from inventors to educators to civil rights leaders. African-American authors and poets are highlighted in English and language art classes, while nonfiction books bring subjects like school integration and civil rights to life. In history and social study classes, landmark legal decisions are disclosed in some classes, while others focus on the role of African-Americans in military history, from the American Revolution through the Civil War, as well as World War II. Across all grades, age-appropriate books, videos, and online materials are used in lessons tied into Black history. By joining together to observe Black History Month, we expand our knowledge and deepen our appreciation for the contributions and achievements that African-Americans have made for the city of Norwalk, the state of Connecticut, and our nation. We encourage all to learn more and to celebrate the generations of African-Americans who have positively influenced our collective history. I'd like to take a motion to approve. Mr. Kessimas, second. Ms. Mosby, all in favor? Yes.
Can I have a discussion?
Yes, I'm sorry, discussion or questions, I apologize.
No, I was, I was thinking, since we're starting the new year and Black History Month, I'm thinking that when, when we have these celebrations of these Black History, Hispanic, and I was hearing already saying something, maybe we should do something about veterans, and maybe we can do like a spotlight after a few weeks to see, and kind of like get a synopsis from different schools as to what they're actually doing for these type of, you know, you know, and say, oh, well, you know, I did this, I did that, and just give a, just read it off to, you know, and let us know what each school is doing. I think that since we're starting, you know, the new year...
Maybe recognize some of the best activities.
Right, right, and the schools, and just let them know, hey, you know, Cranberry did this, you know, Roatton did that, you know, West Rocks did this, and just, you know, put it out there so we can all see, and it's for Black History, for Hispanic, for veterans, things like that.
I think that's a great idea. And also thinking, maybe if Brent is here, we could post some of this, some of the things our schools are doing, which we've done in the past, but I don't know if we've got lax, I don't think we have, but I think in certain situations like this, upcoming Veterans Day for next year, just to put that on our website, I think would be helpful, things that we have in the schools. Okay. Thank you.
That's it, thanks.
Okay. All in favor? Or do we have a discussion, I'm sorry, question, discussion?
It's very minor, but it's a leap here, so we want to make sure.
Okay. Any other discussions, questions? Okay. Motion to approve now?
Yes.
Great. All in favor? Thank you, passed. Now, we're on to information and reports. December 2015 monthly financial report, Mr. Hamilton, glad you didn't go too far. Right back there.
Okay, provided you the standard monthly financial report. We are 50% of the way through the fiscal year at the end of December, and we're roughly 40% of the way through the school year. The total expenditures of the district at this point stand at 45 and a half percent. So, sort of top-level review, I think we're, we're in line with where we would expect to be at this point in the year. Now that the budget is out, we have done some more detailed analysis on a number of our accounts, and we're continuing to do that analysis, so it, by no means is it complete. Certainly, the good news, I think I can report, is that our, all of our regular wage accounts, we've done a recent updated analysis on those, and we look to be in good shape in terms of all of our regular wage accounts, which we would expect, that's funding, you know, approved positions and so forth. Some of the accounts that we are focused on and looking at, some of the substitute accounts are running a bit higher than I would like to see, although I do believe that based on where we are in our regular wage accounts, we should be able to cover any shortages, if there are any shortages there. The really, the major issue is the same one I've talked to you about before, and that is special education expenses. Special education expenses, particularly as they relate to other professional services, these would be for ABA therapists and other contracted services, as well as out-of-district tuition expenses. Was talked about earlier at the meeting, we had identified both of those areas as areas where the district was likely going to run significantly over budget, and our updated projection of where we're at now is continuing to indicate that we're likely going to be over budget significantly in those two accounts. In total, the shortfall on an expenditure basis between those two accounts looks to be about $4.7 million. About $1.5 million will be made up from additional Medicaid reimbursement that we have available to us, so the net shortfall that we're dealing with there is about $3.2 million. So it's a significant shortfall. Now, we do have a plan, and that plan I will be bringing back to the board, is to use our fortunate circumstance that we find ourselves in, and that is the health insurance fund that we fund jointly with the city is in very good shape. And it's in very good shape because of past contributions by the Board of Education, which were greater than the benefit expenses. So, the audit from last year indicated the insurance fund had a surplus of about $18 million, about $14 million of which was attributable to contributions from the Board of Education for medical expenses that exceeded the actual payouts. So I would expect to request that the Board of Education make a transfer from our budget account this year for health insurance into our special education accounts, thereby reducing the contribution we would be making to the insurance fund in the current fiscal year. So that's the basic plan to deal with the shortfall in the budget, and, and again, we're monitoring it, we're looking at it. Obviously, if there were some reason to believe that we're going to be significantly less than this, then we would probably propose a transfer that's less than these amounts. But absent some indication that the shortfall in these two accounts is not in the magnitude we're talking about, we're going to need to do something akin to what I just suggested, which is essentially make a smaller contribution into the insurance fund, which fortunately doesn't need the full contribution we have in our current year budget to still remain in a very healthy position. So that's really the, the major issues in the budget. Again, we're still in the process of going through account by account to identify areas where we've got, you know, potential either turnback or other shortfalls, but I don't see anything to date that, outside of the special education, which gives me any real concern to think that we can't cover it internally within our existing appropriation.
Mr. Barbis?
Yes, Tom, so are you talking about taking that full 3.2 out of the 14? Or 18?
Up to 3.2. I mean, if we, if it turns out we can cover some portion of it, portion of it from other accounts within the district budget, we might look to do that first. And so that's where we kind of have to go through that detailed account-by-account review to figure out, you know, where do we have money, where do we need money? So if it can be less than 3.2, I would rather it be down in the, you know, the 2 or 2.3 range, but if it turns out that we're short 3.2, then that's what we'd have to do.
And weren't, wasn't there some discussion that, to help us, you know, with all the spending we have to do in '16, '17, we were going to draw on that? We would draw on that over a period of, I can't remember if it was three years, maybe?
Right, yeah, we talked about a five-year drawdown period, that's correct, yes.
Would that get impacted at all by, if we had to do this, I would think?
Well, there's enough money in that account that it wouldn't necessarily get immediately impacted. It would impact at some point in the future...
The outer years?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and the difference between the 14 and the 18, does the city contribute to that fund?
Yes, the city contributes to that fund as well, so they've got some extra balances in some of their accounts as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Kessimas?
I'm really liking the iPad, but this is for Ralph.
Sideways.
All of his reports are coming in sideways. My neck really hurts. Is there a way we can fix that?
We should sort of rotate it, I think.
No, because it just rotates back. Watch. There it goes. Doesn't matter what you do.
Yeah, you got to print the, you got to print them on portrait.
Where, that's the purpose of the lap, the iPad.
Exactly, not to print.
Not to print, paperless, right?
Well, you can still zoom in on it, if it's portrait, because I'm like...
Like this. I could zoom in like that.
Any other...
I can hold it at like, about this angle right here.
There you go.
Any other discussions, questions? Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Sure, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Next, we are on to committee representative reports. Let's start with Dr. Krevikor, this way.
I am waiting for two more additional appointments to the ad hoc special ed committee, and once that is set, then I'll email those two additional members and remaining members on the committee to start setting up a date for our first meeting. I'm expecting to have, hopefully, the first date be in February, but if not, it might be in March.
Thank you. Mr. Meek?
Finance has the calendar set for this year, we'll meet fourth Wednesdays at 6:30. I don't have the room in front of me, I'm upstairs here. And we'll probably forego this month's meeting, just due to all the extra meetings around the budget and that, so we're good.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. We just had our policy meeting tonight, we had a great turnout, a lot of PTOC representatives, a lot of members from the community. We, Dr. Adam Askey presented, really talking about launching our school governance councils in all of our 19 schools. Some of our schools have it, some don't, but we have a lot of work ahead of us, good work ahead, but we are in the discussion stages, and we also handed out a draft, which we discussed during our retreat, on school governance council. So we will be having, our next meeting is always going to be prior to our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, which is the first Tuesday of the month, which will be February 2nd. We also had Mr. Bruce Morris, who is our school climate coordinator, discuss further our policy 5131.91 on our bullying policies. So we had a PowerPoint presentation, which was well-done, and we're ready to, right now, at this point, focus on our school governance councils.
Facilities Committee, we had our first meeting last week. We reviewed the first part of the report, and that was an assessment of our existing facilities, so it's really just bringing up our current facilities to code, that's what that report was about. And the consultants rated things in a scale of one to four, one to two being most immediate, three and four longer-term, and then they ranked, they put a dollar estimate on each amount of work, and the result was, they ranked the 12 elementary schools and the four middle schools by urgency, so the most urgent middle school was West Rocks because of the windows. We're already proposing that that be done in '16, '17 in our capital budget. And then, interestingly, they ranked the most in need elementary school as Marvin, which is built on a slab, and there's some moisture issues coming through the slab. There's more, more studies could be done on that, and that's probably not as big a project, or maybe as urgent as they suggested it was. But the fact is, we got to look at the big picture down the road, and this, that first report suggested it was a $77 million needed to be spent, but I think you have to take that with a grain of salt. We need to look at, at the final conclusion, the Part III report, to really determine what kind of funds we're going to need going forwards for improving and enlarging our schools. Tomorrow at noon, we'll have the second up part of the report, which is the demographic study, and looking at what our student population is going to look like going forward over the next 10 years. And then, the conclusion, the third part study, will be next Wednesday.
Monday.
Monday, next Monday, sorry. So that's it for, for facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Barbis. Mr. Kessimas?
Yeah, real quick, curriculum, I was asked about our calendar. I spoke to Dr. Connor yesterday, there isn't that much on the agenda, so we're going to go with an as-needed calendar. And so, well, you know.
Thank you. Ms. Mosby, do you want to start us off with the board member announcements?
Sure. Yeah, I attended the Elf Junior production over at West Rocks, and it was great, like always, and those young kids, they're, the young adults, they are great, and they are what's going to lead up to our, you know, high school, I can see, starting there. And that's why I'm a strong supporter of the arts, because I feel that starting there at that young age is precious. Then we, then I attended the MLK event at West Rocks, you know, yesterday, and we had, of course, Dr. Connor was our keynote speaker, and he was extremely wonderful, and that event was great, and they, and I was quite impressed that they had a, the workshop, and they had adult workshop, and the parents, the adults in there were very passionate, and I was talking to a couple of the community people that were in there, about trying to build on that momentum, they're very passionate about their children, education and everything out there, and it was really good. And there was one quote that was said about, you know, the dream, whether it's a dream or a nightmare, and I, that's still registered in my mind, because, you know, after so many years of what Martin Luther King stands for, whether or not, these years later, have we progressed, have we moved forward? Is it, you know, are we trying to achieve the dream, or are we just in a nightmare? And in order, someone said that in order to achieve the dream, you have to get past and through the nightmare, in order so that we can realize the dream. And that's something I thought should register in everyone's mind. But going back to Dr. Connor, I really loved his speech, he talked about his grandmother and mother, and how they were inspirational, instrumental in him, you know, going into education, and he put that out there, and we had a few board members, which I think they're probably mentioning when, when it goes to them, that attended the event as well. But going back again to the arts with the Elf, and now Brian McMahon is going to be coming up with their production, you know, Legally Blonde, which, I love that movie best. So I can't wait until that takes place, and, but we had a few good shows, and I have to say, our kids are doing very well with the arts.
Great, thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was at the events that Shirley just mentioned, and I will echo her sentiment that Elf Junior was remarkable. I went in there to a middle school performance, not really knowing what to expect, and was blown away by the overall production value and also the talent of those kids. It was great to really watch what goes on in the schools. The MLK presentation along with Dr. Connor's speech, it was an amazing day, just, I was, I was really taken aback by the whole experience, and I'm hoping to be in attendance at the Legally Blonde on Saturday, as long as this pending snowstorm doesn't, you know, get in the way of it.
Yeah, like it's for a couple weeks now, they're having it this weekend.
I know, and I actually picked this Saturday, so I'll see if I can change it. I will reach out if I need to do a snow date. I thought we were done with those after last year, right? But as far as something that, two things that I'm working on, my liaisonship with the PTOC, that is progressing, I have reached out to the executive committee there and will be in attendance. This coming Monday, I believe, is the next meeting, and we're looking forward to building a new relationship there, this is a new liaisonship, so I know the parents are excited, especially with the moving forward of the school government... So, I know the parents are excited, especially with the moving forward of the school governance council. So, they're very, very much valuing our addition to their ranks. On top of that, I have the partnership with the Norwalk Acts, as well as their liaison. Besides the fact that Anthony Allison was here discussing, you know, the survey, there are other things that we are able to work on. And we had a meeting this past week, was about an hour and a half long, and we discussed many topics, and really looking at the value that that organization can add to us with or without this survey is really immeasurable. And I'm looking forward to continuing to developing that, along with Dr. Adamowski's input, so.
Thank you. Mr. Kassimis?
I also want to echo the comments. Dr. Connor did a wonderful speech, fabulous. And I also want to thank the MLK Committee for allowing me to speak and address the students, and last night as well at City Hall.
Thank you. Mr. Barbas?
I don't think I have anything specific to report.
Okay. I'll go next. I'll piggyback with Ms. Mosby and Mr. Anderson. I went to see Elf, amazing, we were all together, we were like one row behind each other. So, it was kind of like a little Board of Ed thing going on, but it was really great. They're amazing, and I agree with Shirley about supporting the arts, which I think we all do, and it really shows how they've grown in middle school and where they'll lead to high school. I also went to the MLK presentation, and that was amazing as well. Dr. Connor, thank you, and Mr. Kassimis, thank you for your speech as well. Just very inspiring going to that. Also, Legally Blonde is going to be the Saturday, like you mentioned, but I'm sure there's a snow date if it doesn't happen Saturday. So, I think there's a couple of different sessions, like Friday, Saturday, within the next week or so. I would suggest that. And that's it for me. Ms. Harris?
Well, I echo... I didn't see Elf, I feel badly that I didn't see it, but my daughter has me running ragged with Legally Blonde. She's the person responsible for putting posters and everything, so she's really excited. Dr. Connor, I really felt your speech, it was very genuine, so I appreciate your speech. Artie, I appreciated your speech too, at the evening event. The brevity, and making sure that everyone knows if they hit the lottery that they must tie. That was hilarious. That was hilarious. And I really appreciated the fact that you told politicals not to be overtly political when it comes to working with children, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And that's it. Thank you for me.
Mr. Meek?
One to three inches of snow Saturday.
I think it's odd, I think it's odd. See you there.
Get your snow tops.
Thank you, Mr. Meek.
That's all.
I might be off by one meeting for this announcement. I went to the Norwalk High School concert, the candlelight concert. And that was absolutely amazing.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it was...
Week two, I'm trying to remember, I went too.
I don't remember the exact day, I looked at my calendar.
Amazing, though, right.
It was amazing. Went to my first PTOC meeting, had the opportunity to go to it, and also I'll be attending the second, well, I should say the first, my first, and my second during the semester break, so I can go next Monday, then after that, I can't. It was a wonderful opportunity to try to meet some of the parents, and just to interact with them and see what their issues are, and how dedicated they are to the system. Not just their students, to the system itself, it was encouraging. I missed Elf, even though Elf is one of my favorite movies. Stuck in New York traffic, so I couldn't make it, and I had something going on on that Saturday, and I couldn't make it Saturday. I'd like to echo what they said about Dr. Connor. I connected with him when he talked about his father, because I, myself, lost my father before I finished high school, and that connected with me. Mr. Kassimis had a, although, you know, he didn't have as much time, but the meeting was just as impactful to me, especially because he was talking about my country, where I was born. So, I hold true to two countries, the United States and Haiti. And the things that he mentioned, I'm one of the lucky ones. My parents came here, and they forced me to go to school, meaning, you know, don't hang out with anyone, you better go to school, or I'll kill you. Gave me an opportunity to be here, to try and serve my community. So, thank you very much for what you expressed, because he just wanted to share with everyone that our students have a tremendous opportunity, and we're working hard to try and give them better opportunities in the future. And last, I'll try to go to Legally Blonde, if I can make it.
We might all see each other, maybe Saturday night.
You're right, exactly.
Thank you, well said. Okay, next item on our agenda is approval of minutes for December 1st, 2015, and December 15th, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Kassimis, second? Mr. Anderson?
Yes, second.
Ms. Harris? Discussion? Oh, Ms. Harris, I'm sorry. Ms. Mosby, I apologize.
December 1st?
Yes.
I was not, I wasn't, I wasn't in attendance, so...
And your name is on here?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't approve it.
When it says you left early.
Thank you. Any other additions, corrections, discussions? Okay. All in favor of the minutes for December 1st and December 15th?
Oh, December, and December 15th?
Yes.
Oh, there's a correction for December 15th.
Okay. Can you tell me which...
Yes, it's just under attendance, just the spelling of my last name.
Okay.
It's C-R-E-V-E-C-O-E, the E is missing, U-R.
Thank you. Ms. Harris?
And can we do them separately?
Sure, absolutely.
Because I have those stained to one.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Let's go with December 1st.
So moved?
Yes. And December 15th? Motion to approve? Yes, you can say yes?
Yeah.
Yes, second?
It's in here, the first.
Dr. Dravikor, any corrections, discussions, additions?
Madam Chair, to speak, clarify, which minutes are we voting on?
December 15th.
Okay.
Correct? Okay, you've abstained, that's fine, because you weren't here for that meeting, correct? Okay. All in favor?
15th.
Okay, yes. Okay. Pass for December 15th. Okay, December 1st, I apologize, I'll go back. Motion to approve December 1st meeting?
So moved.
Okay, second? Mr. Kassimis? Okay. Any questions, discussions, additions, comments? Okay. Motion to approve?
Just take my name off.
Yes, and your name is off, correct? Motion to approve? Okay. All right. Approved, thank you. Next item on our agenda, we have our executive session. I just spoke to Dr. Adamowski. Due to the late time, we'd like to move the executive session to our February 2nd meeting. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Okay, second? Mr. Barbas? All in favor of moving our executive session to February 2nd? Approved. Thank you. Last on our...
Motion to adjourn.
Were you reading my mind?
Yes, I was.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Kassimis, second? I've gotta go this way, to be fair.
Okay.
Ms. Harris, all in favor? Okay, adjourn, thank you, everybody, for attending tonight.
Good job.
Thank you. Sitting for, it's 5 o'clock, thank you.
Long day.
Long day.
You can't.